Okay, today we have a proclamation. Whereas the recorded Hispanic heritage has been part of the DNA of American culture for over four hundred and eighty years with undeniable influence in education, public safety, infrastructure, economic development, and governance. And whereas, in the words of Cesar Chavez, "Preservation of one's own culture does not require the contempt or disrespect for other cultures." And thus, we celebrate the contributions of the robust Hispanic diaspora that includes Argentina, Bolivia, Brazil, Chile, Colombia, Costa Rica, Cuba, Dominican Republic, Ecuador, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Mexico, Nicaragua, Panama, Paraguay, Peru, Puerto Rico, Uruguay, and Venezuela. And whereas, community members of the city of San Marcos are proud of their Mexican heritage that includes Native American and Spanish blood, identifying themselves as Mexican-American, Tocano, Latino, Spanish, Tejano, or Hispanic, there are other South American countries whose people have become part of the colorful fabric which has been added to the Texas culture that is sometimes impossible to separate from what's called Tex-Mex. And whereas humanity and centuries of hope and sacrifice have brought us to commemorate the strong and visible roots of Hispanic heritage which has contributed to the infrastructure in farming, business, science, and the performing arts in the national regional and local landscape of our nation. And whereas, the city of San Marcos encourages and promotes strong and inclusive communities that recognize and celebrate efforts to bring people together for a greater good, as shall be shown with the first Hispanic Heritage Exhibition Walk. Is this the first or the second? I thought it was the second, all right. That will take place on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, in San Marcos during Hispanic Heritage Month. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby claim, declare September twenty twenty-three as Hispanic Heritage Month and do hereby call upon all the people of San Marcos to recognize the contributions made by persons of Hispanic descent to our community and way of life. Congratulations to whoever is behind the Hispanic Heritage Walk. I understand it was very successful. I couldn't walk with y'all last year, unfortunately, but I understand it was very successful and I'm glad it's being repeated.
Thank you so much, Mayor Houston, and thank you, City of San Marcos. I do want to recognize those people that are behind doing all of this. And the committee is Gloria Salazar, Frank Arredondo, Cindy Arredondo, Belinda Arredondo, and last, but certainly not least, our program coordinator, Yancy Arevalo. So, thank y'all so much, it wouldn't have been possible. This is teamwork. And truly, it is in the diversity, we want to show the unity that this walk will bring. Because we know the Latino culture is that Hispanic culture is a fusing of different cultures with the indigenous community that when the Conquistadores came over, it was European, Spaniard, Indian, African roots. And this is fusing together a diversity with unity. And so that's what we want to represent, is a San Marcos that can be diverse in unity. Thank you.
Thank you. I did make the courthouse portion and the recognizing of all the different cultures. It took a while, but it was a great celebration. And of course, the afternoon is a great celebration. So thank you again, those of you who have put this together and repeating it again this year and for many years to come, I hope. And now, another proclamation. Whereas the city of San Marcos recognizes small businesses as the backbone of our local economy and the glue that holds our communities together. And whereas, San Marcos is a city of dreamers and a city of doers, a city of ingenuity, diversity, and tolerance that is home to a dynamic Latino community whose members have made immeasurable contributions to our city and have helped to perpetuate and enhance a culture of diversity and strength of character. And whereas, San Marcos has always been a place for entrepreneurs, small business owners, and trailblazers who work to create and innovate. And whereas, we recognize the invaluable contributions that each and every community makes to our great city, we are honored to call attention to our Latino community in advance of Latino Heritage Month. And whereas, the city is proud to recognize Support Latino Business Day. And whereas, we're joining together celebrating the significant economic contributions Latino-owned businesses make, the jobs they help create, and the positive impact they bring to our community and beyond. And whereas, the city of San Marcos is joining communities across the country for Support Latino Business Day to officially acknowledge and encourage support for our Latino-owned businesses. Therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby declare September fourteenth of twenty twenty-three as Support Latino Business Day and do hereby, I call upon all the people of San Marcos to shop local and support Latino businesses in our city. And I recall, last year, there was a list of many, many, many businesses over the last fifty, hundred years, and it was, it was amazing. And, and the folks that are still here, or even the new ones, were happy that they're all here.
So certainly, San Marcos has always been a very strong Hispanic community. And there has always been a strong business community. And so, as San Marcos changed, you saw the community, the business community change also, but it never went away. It is all still here, and some of these businesses have been here for over a hundred years, in the same place where they were before. And I'm certainly grateful for all of the food trucks that serve a diverse, a diversity of tacos, I don't know about anybody else, but you see that throughout our community. You can go and you can find food from different countries. There was a time when San Marcos was not like that, but it is that way now. So I think that we should be proud of that and support all of those individuals. It's not an easy struggle, but all of those individuals who step forward and take on that risk to do that. And every individual going out on their own, whatever, whatever your business is, you can be an attorney, you can be a writer, you know, all of that, there is a struggle with it. So, we certainly appreciate everyone coming out, supporting the community. We got lots of places to shop and eat. Thank you.
Thank you. A proclamation. Whereas, according to Feeding America, the pandemic has most infected families that were already facing hunger or are one paycheck away from facing hunger. And whereas, households with children are more likely to experience food insecurity. And many of these households do not qualify for federal nutrition programs such as the Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program, SNAP, and therefore must visit their local food bank and other food programs for extra support. And whereas, the Hayes County Food Bank represents a countywide effort to provide nutritious food to the food insecure in the greater Hayes County area, made possible by the generous contributions of individuals, civic organizations, local government, and businesses. And whereas, in twenty twenty-two, the Hayes County Food Bank and its partners served on average each week two thousand five hundred low-income individuals and those facing a food emergency, distributing more than one million pounds of food to those households in need. And whereas, half of all the Hayes County Food Bank clients in twenty twenty-two consisted of San Marcos residents, and nearly all partner nonprofit agencies served were based in San Marcos. That is, more than six thousand seven hundred San Marcos residents were served through the food bank distributions, and twenty-five San Marcos partner nonprofits were served, including church, school, and shelter food pantries, and the new Unsheltered Outreach Program. And whereas, a fifty-dollar donation can provide one hundred and fifty meals through the buying power of the food bank. And whereas, National Hunger Action Month is a Feeding America effort to raise awareness about the hunger epidemic in the United States and to encourage individuals to take action in some form against hunger. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby declare September of twenty twenty-three as Hunger Action Month in San Marcos, Texas, and do hereby call upon the people of San Marcos to take action against hunger in our community, whether it be by fund, or food donation, volunteering, or advocacy. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm Lisa Young, and this is Kamaya Taylor. I'm the new-ish ED of the Food Bank, and I've been so pleased with the support from the San Marcos community that I've seen for myself and our staff and for the Food Bank. We have several ways. You follow us on Facebook, look at our website, that you can take action personally this month, you can come volunteer with us. In fact, coming up, September eleventh is a special day of service for us and the nation. You can donate money, you can have a food drive and donate food, and you can advocate. We have links available on our socials to, for you to be able to reach out to your representative. What we're really advocating most for right now is a strong farm bill. They only do the farm bill every five years, so whatever we have now, we're stuck with till twenty twenty-eight. And we are asking everyone to contact their representative to an increase for SNAP benefits and food benefits for the people who need it. I appreciate it very much. Thank you, Mayor Houston.
As a, as a former member of the Food Bank Board for eight years and president of two, I can tell you that these folks do a lot with a smallish building.
Through the cardboard.
Yes, not, 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 not as many volunteers as I think you could use, but it's wonderful. Ma'am, would you like Beverly to take that photo so you can be in it? Okay. And I, I know that the, the people of San Marcos that need these benefits appreciate it so very much. The numbers are staggering, but they are what they are, and they're probably not everyone who needs help.
They are only a small portion of, of people who need help. Every day last week, we broke a record. So then the next day would come and we would break the record again. The numbers have gone up, and the main reason is the sunsetting of the emergency funding that was for SNAP. So, from, you know, from the emergency beginning in twenty twenty until March of this year, the average SNAP application would get a household almost thirteen hundred meals per year. That has been reduced to seven hundred and thirty meals per year. And we have seen it every day in the demand for our services. So we definitely need the community's support.
Fortunately, there are food business corporations that do help. A food drive is great, but a fund drive is always wonderful because they've got the power to turn that dollar into many dollars in their purchasing power. So if you have the opportunity, Food Bank can make real good use of a few dollars. A proclamation. Whereas, September is recognized as Suicide Awareness Month to raise the visibility of mental health and proactive suicide prevention resources in our community. And whereas, National Suicide Prevention Week begins with World Suicide Prevention Day on September tenth, a moment in time which we rally the public to create awareness of this leading cause of death and inspire more and more people to learn how they can play a role in their communities to help save lives. And whereas, according to the National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMI, the Center for Disease Control, CDC, and the National Institute of Mental Health, M I M H, suicide is the second-leading cause of death among people aged ten to fourteen, and the third-leading cause of death among people aged fifteen to twenty-four in the U.S., noting that forty-six percent of people who die by suicide had a diagnosed mental health condition. And whereas, according to those three agencies, the prevalence of serious thoughts of suicide greatly impacts our youth in the U.S., specifically eleven point three percent of young adults aged eighteen to twenty-five, eighteen point eight percent of high school students, and forty-five percent of the LGBTQ youth in the U.S. And whereas, the city of San Marcos states publicly that it places its full support behind the Core Four Partnership, which is comprised of the city of San Marcos, Hayes County, San Marcos School District, Texas State University, the SMTX Mental Health Coalition and its members who work in the field of mental health, education, and law enforcement. And whereas, community organizations such as Senecor Foundation, Greater San Marcos Youth Council, Hayes Caldwell Women's Center, NAMI Central Texas, Communities and Schools of Central Texas, Hill Country Mental Health and Developmental Disability Centers, along with other organizations, local mental health providers serve on the front lines and see the impact of suicide and work to reduce the stigma, provide resources, support, and education to the city, I'm sorry, to citizens of San Marcos. And whereas, we encourage all residents to take time to understand mental health through education by actively participating in mental health first aid training, assist suicide prevention training, youth awareness of mental health training, and other opportunities to increase education and awareness in the city of San Marcos. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby declare September of twenty twenty-three as National Suicide Prevention and Action Month. And do hereby call upon the people of San Marcos to recognize that we need to take care of our mental health while we take care of each other. Thank you to those of you who are bringing this to our attention and who are working in the field.
Thank you, Mayor Houston. We're very grateful to be here today, representing so many more than those you see in front of you today. The Core Four Partnership is an integral piece to why we're able to promote the public education efforts that all of us here, representing the Mental Health Coalition, are all about. It's not an easy process, and it's not going to be one, but we know that it's worthwhile. So we're very grateful for the opportunity, working with the school district, the county, the city here of San Marcos, and of course, Texas State, because together, we're the community. We, many of us, whether we're in the field or not, are directly impacted by the areas of mental health and suicide attempts and those that, where that's completed. And we are here, regardless of all that, to show that life is worth all the effort that we're putting in. So we're very grateful. I represent Senecor, but as we said, there are many others involved. And we're very grateful to have this coalition with all that's coming forward in our community to show how we're coming together to improve this for our young ones.
Again, thank you for what you're doing in this area. Those statistics are troubling, and so, thank you. All right. A proclamation. Whereas, preparedness is a national priority with the goal of shared safety and resilience. And whereas, the state of Texas historically leads the nation in the number of federally-declared disasters, be they natural hazards, technological, or human-caused. And whereas, Emergency Preparedness Month is an opportunity for the city of San Marcos to inform and educate the residents, businesses, schools, and communities in the city to be more prepared by developing the capabilities needed to prevent, protect, against, respond to, recover from, and mitigate against all threats and hazards. And whereas, preparedness is a responsibility of every resident of San Marcos, and San Marcos residents are encouraged to take intentional precautionary measures to ensure the resilience of their families, homes, community, and businesses. And whereas, Emergency Preparedness Month is also an opportunity to reiterate our gratitude for the selfless service of the brave men and women who help prepare our city for disasters and take action when they strike. Our first responders, critical infrastructure and other frontline workers, and disaster-response volunteers often take great personal risks to perform their duties. These individuals, personally and collectively, are essential to the security of our city, where we remain committed to supporting them in their mission. And whereas, personal, business, animal, and private sector preparedness may serve to mitigate the impacts of various incidents, emergencies, and disasters in the city. And whereas, promoting a culture of resilience through preparedness helps enable communities and individuals to take the preparatory actions necessary to overcome the threats and hazards that present themselves. And whereas, during Emergency Preparedness Month, I encourage all the people of San Marcos to adopt a proactive mindset and take the necessary steps to prepare their families and communities to withstand and recover from unexpected events. We cannot always know when the next crisis will occur, but we can know that we will be prepared by committing ourselves to a culture of resilience. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim, I'm sorry, declare, September twenty twenty-three as Emergency Preparedness Month and do hereby call upon all the people of San Marcos to take action to be prepared for a disaster or an emergency by encouraging all businesses, schools, residents, and communities to develop emergency, preparedness, and resiliency plans and to register at warncentraltexas.org to receive emergency alerts. Thank y'all for what you do. Thank y'all for what you're gonna do, the next time one of these hits, because we know we're in flash flood alley. We've seen the wildfires, things happen. And so, thank, thanks to each and every one of you for doing the prepared part, prepared part, and the recovery.
Thank you, Eric. At this time, we'd like to go ahead and ask families to review their family plans. It's the perfect time. Plus, we'll be having a Preparedness Fair this Saturday, direct up in Hayes, and we encourage everybody to come on out.
And let, and let me let you know that if you register at warncentraltexas.org, you can register not only your address, maybe you're not in the flash flood area, but Grandma is. You can register Grandma's address also, and you'll receive the same alert. So that's one of the advantages, instead of just waiting for the text message, it comes on your cell phone if you're not registered. So you can register multiple addresses. I encourage anyone and everyone to sign up. Y'all ready? I'm ready, we're ready. All right, yes, we are. Proclamation. Whereas, the United States of America suffered the worst terrorist attack in our nation's history on Tuesday, September eleventh of two thousand and one, with the hijacking and destruction of four passenger airplanes, the devastation of the World Trade Center in New York City, and the attack on the Pentagon in Washington, D.C. And whereas, these vicious attacks claimed the lives of three thousand innocent people, wounded the heart and soul of Americans, threatened the security of our country, and endangered the economic stability of nations around the world. And whereas, Americans and people throughout the world have responded to the events of September eleventh with a commitment to protect our freedoms, the will to seek justice, and the resolve to fight terrorism wherever it exists in the world. And whereas, twenty-two years after the catastrophe, our nation commemorates the heroes and the innocence of this attack on our nation, rededicating ourselves to the principles of freedom and democracy that are the foundation of our nation. And whereas, the city of San Marcos will hold a brief remembrance on this day to honor the memories of the heroic civilians, firefighters, EMS personnel, and police officers who died on September eleventh of two thousand and one. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim September eleventh of twenty twenty-three as nine eleven remembered today in San Marcos, and do hereby call upon the people of San Marcos to remember those lost on September eleventh of two thousand and one, and to rededicate ourselves as patriotic Americans by flying the flag at the United States and reaffirming our commitment to liberty and justice.
Thank you, Mayor Houston. We just want to remind the public of two different events. We are, we're still honored here in San Marcos to be supported by our city management and our mayor and council to host these. to host these, and so we will have two events this year. One will be a memorial stair climb that first responders from throughout Hayes County will be participating in at Bobcat Stadium. We invite the public to attend and cheer those folks on. Uh, that will start on September the tenth at Bobcat Stadium at seven a.m. And then here at City Hall, as we've done for the last twenty-two years, we will do our ceremonial flag raising in a moment of silence in remembrance of nine eleven, and that will begin here at eight forty a.m. And we'd like to see as many of the public and other fellow employees attend as possible, and thank y'all for continuing to allow us to recognize this day.
And thank y'all, thank y'all for, for what you do, and thank you for continuing the remembrance, because we never forget, right?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.